I'd like to call the March meeting of the Haywood County Board of Education to order. I'd like to welcome all of our teachers this evening, thank you for coming. At this time, I'm going to call on Mr. Jimmy Rogers to lead us into invocation, immediately followed by the pledge of allegiance. If everyone would please rise.
Let us pray. Our most kind and great, holy Father, as you can see, for the representation of these dedicated teachers here tonight. Lord, we pray that you be with them each and every day as they go into their classrooms, that they can teach these kids and teach these children the things that they need to be taught. Help them to grow in their education. Help the families, help the community, Lord, to be the best that we can be. Take everything that we do, Lord, and guide us and direct us that we can do it in the best ways, in the best ways that honor you and your name and your country. Guide us and direct us. We love you and we thank you for everything you do for us. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Board members, I'd like to remind you that the next board meeting will be held here at the Education Center on April the fourteenth at seven o'clock. Are there any other announcements that we'd like to make?
Can I just make one?
Absolutely.
I am pleased to announce that on Saturday, March the third first, that the foundation raised over...
Come over to the microphone, please, Ms. Wood, so everybody on our viewing audience can hear.
Okay. I am pleased to announce that on Saturday, March first, the foundation raised over fifty-five thousand dollars for the students, schools, and employees of Haywood County. And it was a great night. We have so much community support and your support and the school's support, so thank you. It was a great, great night.
That was over ten thousand dollars more than what we'd raised in the past, so excellent, excellent night, and a good time, was had by all. Really enjoyed it. Thank you so much for all the hard work, and please let the foundation board know that we appreciate their hard work and dedication, because without them selling the tickets and without the candidates raising money, they would not have been successful. Are there other announcements at this time? Okay. Under agenda adjustments, we need to add the NCEA request for a resolution to be added to our agenda, and let's add that right after item number nine, between nine and ten. Without objection? Okay, no objection, we'll adjust the agenda that way. Now we'll call on Mr. Mark Shepherd.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'd like to call Ms. Shipman from Waynesville Middle at this time for a sports recognition.
I'd like to congratulate Liam Matthews from Waynesville Middle School.
If you don't mind, what was the student recognized for? Is it wrestling?
Kim.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't catch it. Wrestling. Congratulations, young lady.
Okay, if I can, I'd like to have our Board of Education line up down here and Mr. Francis up front.
Don't shoot us, please.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, it's an honor for me to be able to present this tonight. The North Carolina School Boards Association Academy for School Boardsmanship presents this award of distinction to Chuck Francis, Haywood County, for successful completion of school board training during the 2012-2013 academic year. Congratulations.
Before I understood the way they count the hours of continuing education credits with the North Carolina School Board Association, I had sat down and I'd figured out that somebody would've had to spend about two months' worth of time to get the number of hours they had in what I thought at that time was a given year, but it's over career, so wanted to Now we'd recognize Ms. Ginny Wood.
It is my pleasure tonight to recognize Krista Hall, who is a freshman at Pisgah, and Kylie Fisher, a sixth grader at Canton Middle. The North Carolina Arts Education Association had an exhibit of student artwork from all across North Carolina this past summer in Washington, DC. The showcase of artwork was displayed nationally for the entire summer in the lobby of the LBJ Building at the Department of Education in Washington. It was a very impressive showing with carefully selected artwork from all grade levels and representing all art medium. The North Carolina Arts Education Association K-12 Art Teachers were asked to select a single student's artwork for consideration. Each region coordinator chaired a team to select work submitted from the region, ensuring that our whole state would be represented. Last year, Anell Wogan, art teacher at Bethel Middle, selected Krista's Silkscreen Butterfly Life to represent the middle school art, and May Kelly, the art teacher from North Canton Elementary last year, selected Kylie's Color Pencil Eagle With Flag to represent the elementary school art. We are very proud to have had these two talented artists represent Haywood County in this prestigious showcase of North Carolina young artists. I also have two certificates. One says the United States Department of Education Certificate of Accomplishment presented to Kylie Fisher, and the United States Department of Education Certificate of Accomplishment to Krista Hall. And then from Haywood County, the North Carolina Art Education Association, Krista Hall, Butterfly Life Silkscreen, and this is presented by Dr. Ann Garrett and Anell Wogan. And the same for Kylie. Congratulations and thank you very much. We're gonna get your picture.
Yeah, can we see the artwork? Awesome. On three. One, two, three. Maggie? Thank you, guys.
Now's a time period designated by the Board of Education for public comments. This time is set aside for comments from the general public in regard to matters of concern of the public. However, comments addressing specific students and/or personnel are prohibited due to confidentiality laws and regulations. Comments are limited to three minutes. The board requests that all speakers adhere to the time limitation and prohibition against mentioning individual students and personnel. We've had a request from Ms. Angela Ray to address the Haywood County Board of Education. Ms. Ray?
Good evening, Chairman Francis, members of the board, Dr. Garrett and Dr. Nolte. Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Angela Ray, and I'm here representing the North Carolina Association of Educators and Haywood County Association of Educators. I would like to read you a resolution concerning the 25% teacher contract law, in hopes that you will vote to sign it tonight. While I realize that we must continue to follow the law, this resolution simply states our disagreement with the law. Knowing that I only have three minutes to get through this, Alex Mascarelli, who has signed up to speak after me, will continue with the resolution if my three minutes runs out. Thank you again for your support and consideration. Now comes the Haywood County Board of Education. On this, the tenth day of March 2014, and at the duly constituted regular meeting where a quorum of said board is present, hereby resolve the following. Whereas in the Appropriations Act of 2013, the North Carolina General Assembly amended North Carolina General Statute 115(c)-325 to prohibit local boards of education from conferring career status for any additional teachers after August 1st, 2013, and effective July 1st, 2018, eliminating career status for those career teachers who have previously been granted career status by a local board of education. Whereas while the board takes no official position as to the prospectively eliminating career status for teachers who have yet to obtain it, the board believes that retroactively removing career status from those teachers who have already obtained it may unconstitutionally interfere with employment contracts legally issued by the board by eliminating a vested property right from career status teachers in violation of the United States and the North Carolina constitutions. Whereas of the date of this resolution, there is pending litigation regarding the legality of the Appropriations Act with respect to the retroactively eliminating career status for teachers. Whereas the Appropriations Act includes legislation that requires superintendents to recommend and local boards of education to offer four-year contracts to 25% of teachers with three consecutive years of teaching experience in the school district who have met certain standards of performance. Whereas the 25% mandate requires an exchange for the four-year contract and a $500 pay raise for each year of the contract beginning with the 2014-2015 school year, those teachers with career status shall voluntarily relinquish their career status. Whereas in order to consider the contract offer under the 25% mandate and give the pending litigation calling into question the legality of retroactively divesting teachers of their career status, teachers will not have sufficient information...
Finish the sentence, please. Finish the sentence.
Oh, okay, thank you. "Sufficient information to make an informed decision when they are faced with the decision to voluntarily forfeit their vested property right to career status in exchange for a four-year contract and additional league compensation."
Okay, next, the board recognizes Alex, and I'm not going to try to say the last name.
Mozzarella.
Mozzarella. Sorry. Excuse me.
Thank you, Chairman Francis, board members, Dr. Garrett, Dr. Nolte. Whereas furthermore, the language in the 25% mandate is vague and subject to multiple inconsistent interpretations. Whereas there is no existing common measurements or evaluation instrument that applies to all the teachers based on the Attorney General's advisory opinion of that term for ratings, test data, teacher effectiveness ratings, or other objective measurement. Whereas the 25% mandate falls as a merit-based pay initiative in that teachers had no prior notice of the criteria necessary to earn additional compensation. Whereas this school system has far more than 25% of its teachers that deserve a merit-based pay raise, given the excellent services they provide to our students, and therefore the 25% mandate process is divisive, inequitable, and demeaning to our teachers. Whereas at this point, the 25% mandate has only been funded for this current biennium budget, and the General Assembly has not been assured boards of education or teachers that adequate funds will be allocated to fund the 25% mandate provisions for the full four years. Whereas in the event that the General Assembly does not fund the mandate beyond the current biennium budget, the financial obligation to fund the additional compensation for those teachers who voluntarily accept the terms of the four-year contract may fall to the board. Whereas the board is deeply concerned that the potentially unlawful and unconstitutional elimination of a vested and earned property right and the identification of only 25% of Haywood County schools' teachers for long-term contracts threaten to disrupt the collaborative, collegial, and stable teaching and learning environments that research show are critical to higher levels of student performance. Now therefore be it resolved that the board requests that the North Carolina General Assembly rescind all provisions of the Appropriations Act that eliminate career status for those teachers who already have been awarded career status, that the General Assembly restore career status to those teachers who have a vested right to career status by virtue of having been awarded career status after complying with the statutory and contractual requirements of the board in the state of North Carolina, and allow the board to use funds allocated in the state budget for the 25% mandate as part of effective and locally developed compensation plan that recruits, retains, and rewards excellence in teaching, and be it further resolved that the board has significant legal concerns and reservations regarding the 25% mandate and its impact on the board and its employees. This, the 20...I'm sorry, the tenth day of March 2014. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Smathers, I have a question I need to ask you about. Mr. Robinson, I'd request that you keep your comments non-political in nature, please, sir.
I will certainly do that.
Okay, thank you, sir.
My name is Ron Robinson, and I'm running for the North Carolina State Senate. Can you hear me all right?
Yes, sir.
Thank you all for letting me come and speak tonight. I simply want to say that I endorse everything that the NCEA has just requested. We need to keep our teachers strong, we need to support our teachers, we need to pay our teachers, we need to have more teachers in the classrooms, and we need to have teacher assistance for K through three, and that's why I'm here tonight, is to say I support that and support the NCEA. And I thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you. Board members, you've had an opportunity to read the minutes from...or to look at the minutes from the February 17th, 2014, regular and closed session minutes. This time we entertain a motion that be approved?
Motion.
We have a motion, Mr. Hins, I hear a second. Second, Ms. Shandival. Any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote all those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Now, we added an item under item number nine, between nine and ten, and it was a resolution that we've already heard read to us this evening. I think the board members have had a chance to look at it. This time, we'll entertain a motion that be approved?
I'm voting that we approve the first one.
Okay, we have a motion, I hear a second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Rogers. Any question or discussion on the motion on the floor?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to say, from the inception of this, I've asked the administration to explain to me the 25%, and they've done an exceptionally great job of explaining to me how this was arrived at. And I will tell you this, Mr. Chair, from the last vote, I don't agree with the 25%. Never have agreed with it. Maybe I'm a fortunate parent of Haywood County schools, I don't believe so. I think I'm just a standard parent of Haywood County schools. As I said in the meeting before, if I had to choose the top 25, every one of my kids' teachers would be one of them. And we have great teachers. And I'm...no, sorry, I get a little motion on you here, because again, you know, politics is politics, and I don't like politics any more than anybody else does. But when you've got something good, and you've got good teachers, you know, take care of them. They got a tough job. And I appreciate everyone for what they've done for my kids and every kid in Haywood County.
Mr. Chairman.
I truly do appreciate yous all.
I have a comment. As a former teacher and principal, I commend all of you for paying the pay and the stand. Appreciate you, and it's an insult to all of you what the state legislature's done. So thank you for this excellent, well-written document.
Any other questions, comments?
I too, Mr. Chairman, would like to thank you teachers for paying your time, coming here and supportive of this, and I guess you can see as this board wants to support you as well for the great job you're doing in our schools with our children. And I really appreciate that as well. I agree with Mr. Morris. 25% is not good enough for me either. I think it's a hundred percent, and our teachers need to deserve it, so have their duties. Thank you.
Deal though.
I like it. Any other comments, questions? There being none, we'll vote, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Now, if you'll stay a little while longer, we're gonna be voting on your pay. Talking about the resolution about the pay, that's on the agenda also tonight. We're gonna take up a resolution on teacher pay and on the...and teacher pay in the state. That's what we're gonna talk about this evening. But anyway, now we'll talk to...ask Dr. Bill Nolte to come forward.
Can you open that file, Leanne? Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Garrett, guests and staff, teachers, I just wanted to put some perspective on the budget. There's a lot of conversation that we've had since 2008, 2009 on the budget, and when you just say the information, a lot of times it really doesn't connect. But we have been asked to implement new curriculum in all subject areas, kindergarten through 12th grade. We have new assessments from the state in all areas, and the budget cuts really do exceed $5 million that we've had from the state. So I just wanted to share these numbers publicly. I know we've said that number before, but sometimes it does not resonate. We have a number of teachers and people in the community who want us to do more, and we're asked to do that, and we need to do a whole lot more, but we're asked to do that with substantial budget cuts, substantial budget cuts. If you look at the sheet, 2008, 2009 is the baseline year. Because the cuts did not begin until after that year had started, the cuts began in January of '09. We had a state...and these numbers are just strictly state allocations for the current expense budget, just the daily operation of schools. We had an allocation of $44,146, and that was the baseline. In '09, '10, we were cut almost $4 million. That's not $4 million less than what we asked for. You don't ask for a budget from the state, okay? So it's...we're not playing games here, that's a dollar...that's just a dollar cut that occurred. And we've also not added this cut repetitively. That $4 million was never added back into the budget, so that's an ongoing cut since it was made. That's an ongoing cut since '09, '10. Little over 9%. In '10, '11, there was a 1.3% state cut, another half million dollars. In '11, '12, just prior to an election, we had a one...we had a small pay raise of 1.2%. And while that was great for our employees, that didn't help us at all with supplies, materials, equipment, or anything really that improved the classroom situation. It was a much-needed increase for employees. In '12, '13, we lost another $300,000, almost another percent. And then in the current year, we've lost another 1.1 million or almost 3% more, 2.87% more cumulatively. That's an 11.39% cut from '08, '09 until the present year. It's a little over $5 million. That includes 138 positions. We have that...fewer people working in our schools. This does not include cuts to infrastructure or brick and mortar or capital outlay. As you know, the state has eliminated all of the average daily membership funds that we receive to repair buildings or build buildings, and our lottery allotment has been cut nearly in half since it was first given to us. So that's...just wanted to give you that for your information.
Ms. Nolte?
Yes, sir.
Does any of these include versions, or is this the...
That's all of it.
That's all of it, okay.
That's on the state side.
On the state side, what you reverted back.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Dr. Nolte. Any other questions on this part of the agenda? No, Dr. Nolte has the next section also.
Thank you. So when someone says that there's more money going into public education, you can tell them, not in Haywood County, not from the state. Each year...excuse me, every two years, we're required to create new school improvement plans to address more rigorous standards, and this time we're doing that with significant budget cuts. But in order for our schools to really write plans that work together and are cohesive across the district, we write a district improvement plan. And this is a district improvement plan that we bring to you for your consideration and hopefully approval tonight, and can you... hopefully approval tonight, and can you just click on that, Leanna? And I won't read every word for you, I think that's been posted to the Moodle for a day or two, but just if we could go to the top section of each goal, oops, back up just a little, thank you. At the stop, at the top is the state goal, "North Carolina schools will produce globally competitive students." You can see, that's pretty vague. What we try to do is funnel that down to something that is measurable, and we, we funnel that down to a district goal that has some solid numerical measures in it, and then each school writes goals that support the district goal. And so, what we have said is, is that, get my glasses going here, might be better off without them. Improved career and college, I'm at that age, improved career and college readiness for all students pre-K through 13, that's the early college 13. If you'll look down to the block that says the baseline indicator, those are the current state measures as we have those today. The goal target is to increase those by two points each, or to the college readiness level, whichever is higher, and then at the end of the two-year term, that's when we will have that final measure. Then we have three strategies with action steps under each one. The first strategy is to provide access to college readiness assessment preparation sessions. We've actually started doing that a little bit more ahead of the plan approval, but just make sure that we're providing ACT preparatory sessions and, as well as sessions that relate to explore in the plan. Now, certainly, we'll do a lot more than is, is in this plan. We, a couple of years ago, moved away from plans that were 20 and 30 pages, because if you did the laundry list, you never really knew what impacted the change positively or negatively. So the last couple of district plans, we've tried to be very specific. The second strategy is to provide earlier access to courses and instruction that supports college readiness, and you can see, we've changed Algebra I to Math I, which is a more rigorous course. We've piloted and will implement English I across all three middle schools next year, and then we have had lots of discussions with our middle schools and high schools about other high school courses that we can reasonably add. We want to make sure that we don't do so much that we fail, but as we do a pretty good job adding one, then we want to try to add others at a reasonable rate. To provide opportunities for honors, advanced, and AP sections, this, we have not lost a lot of courses, but we have certainly lost some sections, and we will be talking about that just a little bit more in a second. Five, to provide teacher training that supports more rigorous instruction, pre-K through 5, we've done a lot of that, but we have plans to do more and have scheduled a district-wide training day next year, early in October. And then to approve appropriate career and college-ready courses through the college, to try to offer more college-ready transfer, transfer courses through the college, and we've been having conversations with them more often, certainly more since Dr. Parker has been here. The, the third strategy is to increase the number of honors, advanced, and AP sections, to increase those sections, and I won't read all those particular strategies to you, but to do that either through additional local funding, which is very, very hard to come by, or through virtual public high school offerings, or for, you know, other, other adjustments that we can make to scheduling. The, just go ahead and go to the second one, we'll try to answer questions all at once. The second state goal is, "North Carolina schools will be led by 21st century professionals." Again, that's pretty vague, that's essentially a training goal that the state has, and the district goal would be, "21st century professionals will learn and demonstrate instructional strategies designed to support the common core and essential standards." Remember, the common core is just English and math, and that's what 46 other states are doing, all the other subjects are really North Carolina curriculum areas. If you'll go down to, to the measures, the baseline measures that we have right now is that 86% of our teachers, which is a fairly healthy percentile, 86% of our teachers demonstrated moving students effectively as compared to other teachers across the state, so that's our baseline data. We'd like for that to be 100% in two years, we know that may be a lofty goal, but we think it's, it's one that we certainly want to shoot for, and then we would measure that in June 2016. And then we have also added some measures for K-2 with a beginning grade reading assessment and, and increase in the third grade, beginning-of-year assessment. The strategy, the strategy is to provide professional development designed to strengthen teacher understanding and use of engaging instructional strategies that support curriculum standards and indicators. We, we actually did about 40 hours of training for each teacher over the last three years on the new curriculums, the two areas that lots of states are involved in, as well as all of our other areas. But one of the things that we need to add now are additional sessions on the actual methodology, more contemporary instructional methods that can be used to address that new curriculum in an engaging manner. So that's what we'll be focusing on. We'll, we meet with schools each semester and do an external visit, that's 32 conversations a year that I and the curriculum and instruction staff have with each school. We just finished, I think we have one school left, second semester. We'll be talking to teachers at those sessions about things that we still need to work on regarding the implementation of the curriculum, so we can make sure that we're really providing the kinds of training that we need to provide. And then, we want to organize good district-wide professional development, if possible, provide funding for teacher instructional coaches, that's tough to come by, we can probably do that from existing funds, that's been very successful at the elementary level with Title I, and then some of our middle schools have gone to that model in the last couple of years, and those folks seem to be very beneficial. And then lastly, provide administrator training to support the instructional growth. One of the things that you always want to do when you increase the rigor of the curriculum, not only do you want the teachers to have the materials in hand and, and improved training, but you want to make sure that the principals understand that information also. And then three, the state goal is, "North Carolina public school students will be healthier and responsible," that, again, a very vague goal that can be measured many different ways through communication, or health indicators, attendance, or discipline, and we've addressed that in various ways over the last couple improvement cycles. But what we really want to do is foster healthy communication with students and parents through inviting 21st century practices. And again, I would like to remind everyone, this is the district plan, this is what we would like to do from our office, not necessarily what the schools would do. Right now, we have one, it's a pretty good tool, but we have one tool that we can use to speak directly to students and parents from our office, and that's the Alert Now voice message, we were very, very proud of that when we found that seven or eight years ago. But in a contemporary society where we're using smartphones, and we're tweeting, and stuff's on Facebook, we need to expand our capacity in our office to communicate more directly with parents and students while they're, in particular, while they're not at school. So we would like to increase the number of communication practices with students and parents by June 2016. Right now, we have one, in a couple of years, we'd like to have four or five very good ones. The first strategy is to expand our current rapid notification capabilities to include texting, we have a plan to do that this summer, that's gonna cost us very little or no money, and so in addition to a voice message, we'll be able to send a text message that will be very good for families who can afford text capabilities, but not, may not be able to afford, afford voice capabilities. Texts also seem to be a, a little more mobile and can be reread and understood a little more clearly sometimes, especially if it's a short message than a voice message. And again, I won't, won't read every, every word to you. The second strategy is to improve 21st century communication between schools, students, and parents, and what we want to do, excuse me, is we want to identify low-cost or no-cost strategies to communicate, and we will explore that and make sure those are very, very safe, and determine how much we really want to venture into the, the Twitter world, or the Facebook world, or those kinds of things. But we, we have to expand that communication practice pretty quickly in order to keep up with others. Again, expanding the web, web framework. The third strategy is to improve parents and, excuse me, to provide parents and students with increasing access to school and student information. We have just implemented the parent portal, and that is pretty limited at this point with things like grades and attendance, and there are additional capabilities that, as we develop and get a, a critical mass of parents signed up, then we would like to expand some of those offerings for parents. We want to seek low-cost ways that allow the media, excuse, media-based communication tools that can be easily accessed by students and staff. One of the examples there, and I know this is taking a little while, but just to give you an idea, about seven or eight years ago, I developed a, a public information webpage, and it was pretty neat at that time. People would go on and comment about it, had people who would text me or call me and say, "I did not like that column," or "that was a good radio program, can we be on the radio program?" Seven or eight years later, no one goes to that public information blog, it's dated, it's an older system, even the, my joke to the schools is, "Man, even the spammers don't go anymore."[1351.13][1351.13](LAUGHTER). So, we'll be working to publish that information on our webpage, and then people who sign up for Twitter or Facebook and follow us will be able to get that stuff as it runs across the news feed on our webpage. I've talked to the radio station that carries our radio program, we will convert that to a podcast, and that will be, instead of digging down into that antiquated public information blog, that will roll across the news feed on the webpage, people can get, get to that. We will ask the schools to write three goals that match the three goals that I have described to you. Again, we want them to be very focused, we don't want them to work on 27 new things just to support those three things. The first one certainly is academic, related to career and college readiness, the second one is training, and the third one is better, more contemporary communication. So we'll ask them to write three goals that complement those. The fourth goal and fifth goals are goals just for our office. It will certainly involve the schools, but we will not ask them to write goals to those. The state goal is, "Leadership will, will guide innovation in public, in North Carolina public schools," again, pretty vague. Right now, the central office administrators, excuse me, the district goal, "Central Office administrators will guide innovation through the selection, implementation, and utilization of instructional frameworks connected to EOGs and EOCs." One of our keys to success in kindergarten through 5th grade has been the establishment of non-negotiable, non-negotiable instructional frameworks that we have in place, in particular in the areas of reading and math. And without reading all of the strategies to you, we intend in the next two years to develop similar non-instructional training frameworks and instructional strategies for K-8 reading, K-8 math, Math I biology, and English II. And then we will either develop or find instructional models for our teachers, and they can use those, and so the instruction in those areas will be more consistent like it is at our elementary schools. And then if you'll go to the, to the last one. The last one is that, "North Carolina public schools will govern and support the, excuse me, will be governed and supported by 21st century systems." What that means is, is that you're doing things with modern tools that help you eliminate errors just by using the particular tool. Our district goal is that, "The Central Office administrators will select 21st century tools to effectively coordinate and manage professional development across the district." One of the things that we have had for a long time is very good staff development. We've had Marcia Tate, we've had Dick Allington, we've had any number of very effective trainers, but we often find ourselves in a situation where we'll have three or four very good trainings going on and simultaneously, and they've not been managed as well as they could, just being honest with you. The one day that we do a good job is in our fall day, where we manage everything for everyone, but we want to develop a, a database that will manage training sessions so that we're not pulling 4th grade teachers for three different workshops on the same day, or maybe even during the same week, and we're not, and schools don't have a really good workshop trained on the same day that we might have one trained in special ed, or just in our curriculum area. And then the second piece of that last goal is, we've had a good, a staff development system that tracks CEU credits and evaluations for trainings, when, when teachers go to trainings. It's been a very good one, and it's served us very, very well, but it's a little like my blog in that it could be better. And so we want to work on either finding or, or developing a credit tracking system, and instead of everyone reminding to go in and fill out the evaluation so we can get the credit, maybe it'll email us every now and then and remind us to fill it out, and it won't stop until we do it. So that is a lot in a very short period of time. I know you've had it for a few days, but I'll be glad to entertain any questions.
First of all, I'll entertain a motion that we approve, the district plan as presented.
I move that we...
Motion from Ms. Melton, I hear a second. Second, Mr. Leatherwood. Are there any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor?
Dr. Melton, I want to, need you on, a lot of work. I'd like to see if this could get to the Haywood County website to follow.
Like, yes, sir.
One other question I gotta ask, as you, as you mentioned early, how much you've been cut, communications is, is a big thing, that's, that's how we all understand each other. I look over there and see your staff, how's, the hard thing is, is keeping enough staff to keep this going. I mean, don't take me wrong, yes, I've got full-time jobs, just taking care of little things. When you start saying, "How am I gonna start communicating on this level?", I'm, I'm as much worried, not that you can't do it, it's, there's only so many hours in a day that people can actually function, and that's, that's what I'd like to see a little bit more, maybe at a work session one day, how are we gonna handle the communications more? I mean, they're just no, using a big cut to the bottom, there's no extra help there. I know you want to get the word out, but it's hard to get the word out, if there's nobody there to, I mean, it takes a lot of time to put stuff together like that, to get a press release out or whatever.
We'll be glad to update you at a work session on that. We have some plans to do that with the staff that we have in, in place.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions, comments? There being none, we'll vote, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Melton. Board members, we had a request, we actually tabled it at the last board meeting, or actually deferred it to this meeting tonight, an offer from the county commissioners to give to us the old part of the hospital, or the new section, actually, the old hospital, as for the district offices. or the new section, actually, the old hospital, as for the district offices. And we have not formally responded back to those, that request. And I think building grounds has discussed this in, on several occasions. And I just need what the board wishes to do about the offer to give us that structure.
I'll be perfectly honest with you, Mr. Chairman. We don't need that old hospital. It's all we can do to keep up where we are right now. And it costs more to fix that old hospital up for our administration purposes. So, I'll make a motion if we turn our offer down.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Mr. Rogers. Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Dr. Garrett, would you inform our county commissioners of our decision tonight? Thank you. Board recognizes Mr. Mark Shepherd.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we have a policy that we are ready to have you guys vote on tonight. It's policy C4. And the change, pardon me, was just about the state mandated end of test for middle school. And the change was about letting the end-of-grade tests, CTE post-assessments, and North Carolina final exams, just for middle school courses count as 20% of the student's final grade. And then, anything that was associated with a high school course, such as Algebra 1 or English 1, would count as 25%.
This time I entertain a motion we approve C4 as presented.
Make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Rogers made the most. I hear a second. Second, Mr. Francis. Any questions or discussion on the motion?
This is more or less state mandated, so.
No, no, no. This, this, this is a local decision. The, the 25% was already part of the high school courses. If you were going to take high school courses for high school credit in middle school, the 25% was already there. The 20% was something that the middle school principals wanted to add, you know, as, as a, putting a little more teeth in the, you know, in the student's performance on the final exam.
I mean, the State Board of Education had a request to that. And then we take, we put in this 20% for the principal's recommendation. Okay. I was backwards on my comment.
Any other questions or comments? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Shepherd.
Thank you.
Board recognizes Mr. Pat Smathers.
Chairman, board, you should have in your packet a proposed utility easement between the board and ERC. That is a nonprofit corporation that is actually going to do some internet connectivity to this, right here on this property. And so, we had to put an easement together to delay their equipment on to the, on to the property. Basically, it's a 20-year term. It is not an exclusive agreement so that any other internet provider or company similar to ERC can locate here on the property. The easement in your packet, there will be a change, assuming y'all approve this, we will strike paragraph three in its entirety. That information came in late this afternoon after it already submitted this to Ms. Moody to present to you. So, if you approve it, it'd be subject to this striking paragraph three in its entirety.
Mr. Smathers, we, I don't believe we do have it in our packet. I'm sorry.
Well, let me start over. Mr. Chairman, this board, there's an easement that you need to look at that's not in your packet.
Mr. Chairman, it's not, I, I'd like to table it since it was a correction. To think if it's not going to delay IT, you hurt IT in any way. I'd like, I'd like, so that we got to see the packet since it was correction. I, I make a motion that we table that, since it's not in front of us.
Do I hear a second to the motion?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? I have a comment. We've been working on this now for.
A while.
A while. There's individuals that are suffering due to the fact that we haven't approved this. And I don't, I'm not saying that we need to rush to any kind of decision on it, but I do think that it may not hurt our IT department, but it's definitely going to affect other folks. And I've been getting calls daily from different county commissioners on what's the holdup. And.
Well, Mr. Chair, I'll rescind my motion.
Well, we've got, we've, we've got a motion on the floor. We'll vote it, either up or down. And then we'll go from there. But I just wanted to.
Can I still say the proposal?
I have some extra comments.
What we could do.
Can we discuss that at our session?
What we can do is, we can recess and, and look at that. And since it's, since it's a legal matter, could we discuss it in closed session to start with, or? We'll recess to open.
Let me just tell you, it is a pretty standard easement agreement, except there are some protections for the school board. I was concerned about nothing being interpreted that we were monopolizing the property from one communication equipment. I also did not want to have it set up so that it would be a perpetual easement. It would only be for 20 years at the maximum unless it's renewed. Plus, if for any reason that this property was sold, the easement terminates. So, it would not be, should, should we cease using this property for school purposes and current surplus, then the easement would, would cease at that time. But other than that, it's a pretty standard easement for utilities. I did have to raise just some extra comments.
I'll just, that y'all can just, but we would just strike paragraph three and we start back.
Okay. Okay, we'll vote on this part of it. We have a motion to table it and a second. If you want to vote on this tonight, you'll have to vote in the negative. Or not vote. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Those opposed, raise your hand. Motion fails unanimously. Okay. Now, we can go back to take a look at it.
I will say that ERC is waiving their, some of their cost for the first five years. It's about $14,000 they are waiving, the cost of the school system.
Why don't we just take a moment and look at it?
Okay.
No cost to us. Where was the change at, Mr. Smathers?
It would be paragraph number three. I had some concern. I wasn't exactly sure what a handhold was, because it's exactly the way it sounds.
Okay, now, well, now, just like you have mentioned, I'm not a face reader. I'd rather just get answers. So, we're not stopping no other communication network from coming in on this piece of property or any other property, as long as they have an easement. That these people do not have sole rights.
Paragraph five says, other communication equipment companies can come in. Paragraph three, as I had it originally written, said that they, any other company could use their handhold that they're going to install. They do not want anyone else using their handhold, but does not stop anybody else from coming in, putting in their handhold.
Well, yeah, in most, in most cases, the utility companies, they, they usually, they keep that stuff usually pretty separate. It, it don't matter what company does that unless you have a small company. I mean, the handholds are usually marked with whatever company has it.
Everybody had a chance to look it over?
Okay, during the first five years of this easement, it waived the cost of the board that some have a current value of $250. So, what are we waiving right there now? We're waiving $245 a month?
No, ERC waves the, the cost. Colocation.
There's no cost to us, or no monetary gain for us.
Right, for the first five years.
Okay, now.
What happens after that?
Then after that, we would, we'd have to start paying our, our cost.
Please do. Because if we're, if we're having to pay for something that's being put on our property.
We currently have a service with ERC. And as a part of this agreement, in the negotiation, they agreed to waive those fees for the next five years. So, this is a service we have been paying. We have a server that sits in the federal building at, at ERC, at their property, that serves as a backup in case we have a power failure here. And so, we're paying about $200 a month for connectivity for that piece of equipment on their, on their side. And they're going to waive that for the next five years as a part of us, but allowing them to put in the handhold.
And in five years, we'll go back to paying $245.
Yeah. Unless at that point, we have, have come across a better way to, to skin that cap.
So, we can get out of this contract in five years if we find it different?
Uh, no.
This contract's for twenty years.
No, once they, once they, and this is some of the negotiation for some of the time. Currently, where we connect, Todd, you're going to explain all this, is actually in the building. So, if another company wants to come in and want to provide services to us, or whatever, they have to come into the building. We don't want other companies coming to the building. This handhold will actually go out near the street, out there, so people don't have to come into the building. And whoever, if anybody else connects to it, will be out on the street, not having to come into our building.
If, if we look, if we were to look underground at the, at that property space between the other side of Central Haywood and the corner of Broad Street and Charles Street, there's a lot of stuff in the ground right there. And so, my big concern is, is that we do our best to, to limit the number of people that are digging right up against the building. And there, with that handhold being, being there, this is going to mitigate any issues we may have in the future with people that are, that are trying to bore through there to get to that spot. Instead, they're going to have an opportunity to, to get out to the edge of the, of the corner of that property and not be up, up near some of that stuff that might be able to actually damage our ability to connect during instructional time.
And going back to your question, Ms. Francis, it's not terminate, they're just giving up the next five years, and then we'll go back in to pay like whatever the charges are now for.
It, it comes out to about a $15,000 benefit on our behalf as part of that process.
Now, I'll entertain a, we hadn't done a motion yet, have we, on the next? Okay. This time we entertain a motion, we approve the ITC ERC easement as presented. Mr. Leatherwood's made the motion. I hear a second.
I'll second it.
Second, Ms. Shandle. Any questions or discussion on the motion? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Would you vote affirmative, Ms.?
I'll vote for it. I mean, I still like, I, I ask my only question. As long as we're not stopping no other communications company.
It will not be a monopoly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Board. That was, it's been a drawn-out process. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Under Agenda Item Number 15, at our earlier workshop, the board discussed Option 2 on the teacher compensation resolution. At this time, we entertain a motion that we approve Resolution Number 2.
I make that motion.
Mr. Morris has made the motion. I hear a second.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second, Mr. Rogers. Ms. Moody, can you put up Option 2? So, I don't want to read the whole thing.
You just put up the second page.
But it's good stuff.
It's the longest one, right? Can't you just paste it out?
Yes.
Can we just give it to somebody out there in the chair?
Sure. Any discussion or questions on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Now, for our favorite subject about the weather is the calendar. Ms. Wood.
I think I'm a jinx. Every time I come give an update, it snows again. I have provided you with a list of the inclement weather delays and days that we've missed, as well as an optional calendar. And I just want to give you an update that as of today, we have missed 11 full days. We've had four two-hour delays, three three-hour delays, and two early dismissals due to inclement weather. So, this puts our current last student day, a full day, on Monday, June 16th, and the last student day, I mean, the last teacher day, on Tuesday, January 17th. June 17th, sorry. So, I have provided you with another option, and that is to make Good Friday, April 18th, and Memorial Day, student days, understanding that this is only an option in our more severe weather years. The change then would then make the last student day, Thursday, June 12th, and the last teacher work day, Friday, June 13th.
At our board retreat this evening, we talked about different options on the calendar. And at this time, I'll entertain a motion to amend the calendar as we discussed, I guess. Is there a motion on the floor?
Mr. Chairman, at this time, I'd like to make a motion that we do amend the cal, the calendar, well, April the 18th, and then May the 26th would be, so it is half-days.
Early release? Okay.
Half-day on the 18th and a full-day on.
Good Friday, half-day. Full-day. Full-day on 26th.
Full-day on Memorial Day.
Okay. So, on Good Friday, April 18th, a 12 o'clock dismissal, and on Memorial Day, Monday, May 26th, a full day.
That's correct.
Okay.
And then there goes two holidays and places on February 12th and the 14th.
And the two holidays now will be placed on the 12th of February, so that the hourly paid employees will get their full pay.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Rogers. It was quite lengthy, and I'm not going to repeat it, but you get the gist of it. Trying to protect everybody is what we're trying to do, with the least amount of damage and get out of school at a decent time. And have our seniors be able to graduate, so.
Not have to come back.
And not have to come back. We have a second from Mr. Morris. Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor?
I just want to say that it, that we did discuss this for, it was a very lengthy discussion, and this turned out to be probably the least painful for, for everyone.
I hope and pray we don't get any more snow.
Yeah, no more snow.
No more snow.
Thank you.
I think there's a, I can still see some disconcertment or misunderstanding out of the auditions stuff. I don't know if there's any questions. It's, just let us know. We'll be glad to help explain that.
Okay. Any, any further questions or comments? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Wood. Okay, next we have our finance chairman, Mr. Jim Francis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item Number 17 is our annual audit contract. This document specifies the services that the audit, audit firm will be providing and the related charges in, for those services. I hope everyone's had a chance to look at that, that contract. The finance committee did need, and we recommend, using the firm of Anderson Smith &amp; White, who has performed our audit, I think, the last two years. And this will be the same firm that will be performing the, the upcoming audit as well. So, at this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to accept the contract, contract as presented to us.
You have a motion from Mr. Leatherwood. Do I hear a second? Chairman, Ms. Milner, to approve the audit contract as presented by, and approved by the finance committee. Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor?
In the, if you pull up the contract and look at it, the contract is going to be for $34,000, with the statements being performed at $3,000, so a total of 37. And this is actually a savings of what we used to pay several years ago to some other firms, about 20 days.
Okay, any other questions, comments? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd also like to address item Number 18, which is the regular monthly financial reports. Again, our financial committee has met and has gone over the monthly reports and has approved them. So, at this time, I'd like to bring them to the board for approval.
Okay. At this time, we have a motion from Mr. Francis to approve the regular monthly financial reports. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Milner. Any questions or discussion on the motion? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. There being none, we'll vote, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, that's all the finance committee has.
Thank you, and thank you for your hard work on the finance committee and the members of the finance committee for all they do. Dr. Garrett. Personnel.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for your information, you have 13 separation from employments, you have one employee status change, and you have four leave of absences. For your approval, you have one separation from employment, you have five employments, you have 141 employment status changes, but I'd like to pull number one and do number one by itself. So if you will approve those.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion, we approve the personnel as presented thus far.
So move.
Mr. Rogers made the motion, I hear a second. Second, Ms. Milner, any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Leatherwood has informed the chair that he has a conflict of interest on the number one that we're getting ready to vote, so he is asked to be recused from voting on this item.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, if you will, number one for your approval of employment status change.
Okay, we have a motion on, no, I, I'll entertain a motion at this time that we approve the personnel as presented.
Motion.
Mr. Hens has made the motion.
I'll second.
Second, Mr. Francis. Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries seven with one extension.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for your approval, two, 341 for employment status Also for your approval, you have two contracted services, you have 21 substitutes, three employee coaches, two volunteer services, and two volunteer coach services.
We entertain a motion, we approve the personnel as presented.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Rogers has made the motion, I hear a second.
I'll second as well.
Second, Mr. Francis, any question or discussion on the motion? There being none, we'll vote, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't know what Jimmy's excuse is tonight, but I've been in court all day. And I'm not yours, used to being in court, so. That's not a fun thing, but we did retain custody of our grandson, so it was a good day, a good day in court, so anyway.
I hadn't made up that hour where I lost in the night.
Now, did the board want to have a brief recess and, and start our work session over again? Is that what we wanted to do?
Well, I think it's closed session, we was wanting to redo closed session.
Okay. Okay, we have, at this time, we had a motion, we go in back into closed session.
I make the motion.
Yeah, Mr. Francis made the most, I hear a second. Second, Mr. Kirkpatrick, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously, we will recess back to closed session.